And I can't put my attention on that right now, so.
Good clarification, thank you. Yeah.
Wait, where's the?
I bet you wouldn't.
It's always so dramatic. I can never get it quite right.
That's right.
Always like too fast, too slow. Okay, am I in the right meeting? I am. Okay, it's seven o'clock, let's call the meeting to order. And.
I have the other one.
Yeah, there's one right next to you. You can scoot that closer to you if not. Okay, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Number two, we need to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to nothing. Section three, consent agenda items. Administration recommends and I so move that the board approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
And tonight that includes the minutes from January 4th. The minutes from January 4th, personalized learning pilot project dispersments, an MOU with DeLee Fine Arts Education Collaborative, MoCap resolution, and policy BBB, school board elections for second reading and adoption. Do you have any questions or changes or comments?
I did ask about comments about the minutes. To suggest changing minutes, can we do that second?
Okay. Do we need to second the motion to move them out? We can just move them?
We can move them out.
Okay. They're pulled out of consent.
I have one question for Steve on 306, but it's super quick. Can we talk about the MoCap stuff at the finance committee?
Yes, we can.
All right.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor with the minutes removed signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, seven to zero. Do we look at the minutes next then?
Can we pick some minutes out?
Yep.
Okay.
So the recommendation I have is that as I read through the citizen comments, we did have three citizen comments about COVID-19 procedures. And the other was not expressed as a concern about COVID-19 procedures, but it was actually an acknowledgement of the board and our role and the work that we're doing. And so I thought we should accept that.
Okay. That's great. Should we just wait and approve them next time then though? Because that'll be written specifically or?
Okay, we can approve.
Yeah. You can approve it with the amendment. I think if everybody agrees with that amendment.
So I can motion to approve the reading list for January 4th with that edit to the citizen comments.
I'll second that. Needs a second, yes, okay. Second that.
I think you can call the votes since you. Yep.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
All right. Then we're on section four, reports. And we will start with the superintendent report.
Yeah, I wanted to keep this brief, but certainly if there's anything that we want to follow up on, we can do that. I know we've got a full agenda as usual, and so want to be mindful of our time. But do want to let you know that this is the time of the year where we start our teacher of the year nomination process. So that's underway. And so certainly there's a lot of probably great people that come to mine. And so I'll encourage our staff to go that extra mile and then fill out that nomination so that we can get that ball rolling within each building. And so certainly probably a lot of people to choose from. But nevertheless, wanted to make sure you know that that process is underway. And certainly that will culminate in a district teacher of the year. But we'll start with that school level process. And then something else that we just have gotten the ball rolling on is creating a calendar to propose to the board for next school year. And so just briefly sent some information to the calendar committee. We have a meeting this week. And then we'll put something out to all of the staff like we usually do to get input. And then hopefully that will culminate on something that you can look at that is supported by staff members throughout the district. So be looking for that next month. Probably if it seems like we can do that February 1st, we will. Probably more likely February 15th. But certainly we're continuing to work on that. And then lastly, something that was in the updates that went out to our staff and our parents was just increasing the availability with our third-party testing partner. And so we added another day where staff and families could choose to come. But then also we were at a point where we felt like we could open it to the community at different hours. They're in late afternoon, early evening, or on Saturdays when we don't have kids in session. And so it's a little bit easier for community members to get in and out of there and not have to worry about disrupting, you know, the school environment. And so that's something that we'll continue to monitor, see if that's necessary. But given our initial turnout, I think the first two days, we averaged 60 folks that were getting tested within a two and a half hour window. And then certainly they stay after if they need to. So if you have an appointment and if they're planning on you coming, they don't turn you away. But that's kind of where some of the data was for those first two opportunities that we had. So like I said, appreciate everyone from Afton that helps coordinate that. But then obviously our third party is really kind of taking the load of communicating with the staff and parents directly on that testing. But wanted to make you aware that we did increase that access. So with that, those are kind of the things I just wanted to point out this evening. But happy to answer any questions on that or any other items that you might have.
Anybody got any questions? I've gotten a ton of positive feedback from the community about that being available. So I'm really grateful that you all put it together and found a way to make it happen. Great. All right. 4.02 MSBA Monthly Board Report. If you haven't had a chance to watch it, I'll recommend watching it, but I don't think we need to take time tonight. They talk about food supply chain issues and how that's impacting a lot of Missouri schools. Safe and Sound Schools did a presentation that has to do with school safety to our, for the Center for Education Safety. So there's a blip about that on there. And then the legislative updates are coming up. And we're all signed up for a virtual one on Friday. So anybody who's able to make that clear, went ahead and set that up for us. I think it's like 12 to 1 on Zoom. So that'll be a chance for us to hear about what's going on at the state level. Anybody have anything else from that they wanted to highlight? All right, 4.03 is the January 3rd District Building Professional Development Report. We have Dr. McGee.
Good evening, all. So January 3rd, we had a sort of a split day of professional development. In the morning, we were in a collaboration with Bayless Lindbergh and Valley Park to host our Next Practices Conference. So it was a virtual conference. We have a little over 140 different sessions offered, starting at 8:00 AM until about noon. And then the afternoon, teachers worked with their principals in their buildings on various activities across the district. So that's the report that you have there. Also want to highlight the app that was built. We had that commissioned and built. And it really provided sort of seamless interface for people across wherever they were to access the different sessions and to engage in learning that day. Any questions? Awesome, thanks.
That's a good report. Thank you. Section five, citizen comments, limited to agenda items. Do we have any citizen comments this evening? And section six, citizen comments, not related to agenda items. Do we have any opposed? All right, section seven, school improvement items. Mr. McNeil.
All right, 7.01 is a comprehensive local needs assessment. I guess it's something we did a couple of years ago related to Perkins.
And it's a great report, isn't it? Very comprehensive, a little less than what we had the last time we did this. About 20 pages less, believe it or not. But what it does, it does help us to look at what the business and industry needs as far as St. Louis workforce, the Missouri Economic Resource Information Center, St. Louis School Business Partnership, STEM STL, and 9PBS workforce partners. We get their input. We look at what the state and the federal government requires us to have for quality programs. And then we look at the students, in particular their interest inventories that they take with Missouri Connections, their ICAPS. We do survey our students and we look at our follow-up. We take all that information, then look at what our needs are and our strengths of our faculty, making certain that we're physically sound and that we're not having individual classes. So Dr. McGee is following back up with the course guideline and some of the changes. Our faculty did a great job with trying to pare down and make certain that we're meeting the needs of the kids, but yet being physically sound and we're not overstretching their, them. One thing that they need to work on, and I'm giving them a challenge. I'm going to give them a toolbox. I'm working on diversity and inclusion and making certain the representation in those classes at ForeTechEd represents the entire district. There are certain programs like Health Sciences, our Biomed program is doing great jobs with that. But other ones, we need to see what's going on and what's happening. Some of the things I'd like to highlight is that knowing that we have limited needs, I'm starting to work with Ms. Winmer on maybe there's some MoCap, some virtual classes that we can offer. That's now approved by DESI. And we're taking the My Path and combining with our Cooperative Occupational Education Program so the kids can develop what they want to learn and then do some internships with them. Some programs that we're working on is Access Point. We're trying to develop opportunities for pre-apprenticeships that leads into apprenticeship after they graduate. So Access Point is one that we just have with one student who's doing it this semester. Second semester, senior year, they go half a day to Forest Park and they can take two classes. It's Java 1 and Java 2, so that they get a little bit more knowledge of that. They're assigned a mentor in the IT field. And then eventually, hopefully, it will be into an apprenticeship in a paid position after they get done through the apprenticeships that will help them to get their associates and bachelors. So that's the goal of that one. Another one we're working on is the Life Science Lab Assistant. It's a dual-enrollment, dual-credit type program. There's five classes that's offered. We offer three of them at Afton anyway as dual-credit. And then they take two additional classes through dual enrollment at St. Louis Community College. They graduate then with this Life Sciences Lab Assistant certificate. Danforth Foundation is working with us also to provide externships once they graduate with the certificate. So they graduate from high school and have the certificate, and then hopefully have a paid internship their summer. I'm working on one for industrial arts. Still working on that one with the Construction Forum. So it's us, Riverview Gardens, and a little bit Foundation and the Construction Forum, trying to see what we can work out for them in the same type of manner. So I'm working. I'm not stopped, even though I officially sent in my papers, I'm still not retired.
We said that when you accepted it. June 21st. Because after that, what's your vacation date?
So are the Life Sciences externships, are they with the Danforth Science Center?
So they're working with them and some of the startups that's in that Riverport area. And I'm also looking at DJC, I've contacted them. We can get a commodity certification.
Now that, which I'm working with Ms. Winmer to see if what we can do, we can put them into internships with them. They take them in a heartbeat.
All right, any other questions? Sorry, I was thinking about the externships, forgetting what I was doing. All right, so the, any other questions?
No, I just, I love this report and I love seeing how you're tying into what you're doing with real kids in real time. It's so exciting. It's one of, I feel like this really highlights some of the stuff Afton does well. So appreciate all your time and work on it.
Yeah, I can offer to make some of that.
Okay. And I'm working with RJ with the carpenters union too, so we'll get there.
Well, the district administration recommends and I so move the approval of the local needs assessment as presented. There a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes seven to zero. I think you are standing.
Standing.
For part two, or the enhancement grant.
So in order to have these programs, we know it costs money. The enhancement grant, it's always a good way of doing that because it pays 75% of any equipment and services over $1,000 per unit. So working with Mr. Zazinski, knowing that we need to upgrade those engineering computers, that's a major part of it. Also, it's Biomed time, so usually we do every three years for a department. Biomed needs some skeletons. And they definitely need some up-to-date skeletons. And then Ms. Wall asked for a bone cutting saw. So I'm always interested in what things I'm ordering for Biomed is always interesting. So this is 75% paid by the state and the district matches 25%. And then the last part is a 50-50 grant. So the enhancement grant has been cut many times, like last year was cut 30%. So in order to help that, with that, anything less than $1,000 was always 50-50 anyway with the enhancement grant. So they have a 50-50 grant that I would like to use to buy new microscopes because that grant never gets cut. So that helps us to help make for certain that we're funding those programs and we don't have to worry about not paying for this in order to pay for this.
Any other questions? The district administration recommends and I so move the approval of the enhancement grant as presented. Is there a second? All right, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Passes seven to zero. Thank you.
All right, moving on to section eight, curriculum. We have Dr. McGee back with us.
Good evening, all. Well, I am bringing to you the last group of first reads and we will be officially at 100%. So there should be some sort of ticker tape, confetti that should rain down from the ceiling at the next board meeting when we motion to approve. But these are the ones that you read about in the local needs assessment. These are also some of the ones that are newer courses in the last couple of years or ones that just had missed the cycle of writing. So these are the last ones, if you will. I will also draw your attention to the minor edit at the bottom of that. You can miss that. But we were working on advanced marketing and I just wanted to highlight, I'm trying to model when we bring you an edit that we're utilizing the same structure that you would see in a policy edit and our policy change. So I'm highlighting in yellow where things are changing and using the strike through so that way it's familiar whenever I bring you edits for the future. Questions about these courses and/or the edit to advanced marketing?
I only see three that don't have your name on it. And only about five that don't have Paragon's name on it. Thank you for all the work for getting us the other.
Yeah, don't think we didn't offer this to teachers first, but teachers have a lot going on right now. And we presented them with a number of different options. And one of the options were like, we can just get it done for you and then I'll bring it to you to make sure that it's okay. So that's what we had to get done. And there are countless staff members behind those names. So yes, I hit the keyboard, but there's countless people behind each of those, for sure.
I love to see the social emotional learning breakdown like that. It was really helpful to be able to just look grade by grade at what they're working on. Because I, you know, I've experienced it in real time with my kids, but I've not been able to look at that picture like that much.
Yeah, and that was important for me to bring to you what, to have that published and for our community to be able to access it.
Absolutely.
So that's, I'm really excited that that will be, you know, now available for people to recognize and to author.
So I have a question and then just a general comment. So things like the honors of American Government and I-12 history degree, the way that those are written are really clear about whether or not they're certainly these are the things that we're going to talk about. And it's not, you need to be in this course to do 12 blocks. And I think that's where, those are good models. There are probably some other ones in there too, but I just picked those two up. They're really good models. And I'd like to see all of our curriculum kind of aligned that way. Because it's very clear to people what's being taught. Some of them are not aligned that way. I think even that advanced marketing one that you just pointed out, it says, "Continue your pursuit in a career in marketing and business." So it's just written in a different way. But I guess you have some resistance. I was going to bring that up.
It's perfect.
And then I have a question about the Black Studies. It's name change, so that shows up somewhere else. What was it? Is it new name?
No, last year, it was called the African-American Studies. And then in, between last year to this year, it changed its name from African-American Studies to Black Studies. And then now we actually wrote curriculum for it.
Okay. Why did they change?
I would have to ask Mr. Moico.
I would get, I mean, it's because it doesn't just cover African-Americans. If you look through what they're studying, they're studying Africans and all sorts of, so.
So it wasn't really clear. And I would like for maybe similar conversation. Because it says it explores the Black experience from pre-slavery to the present. And so which Black experience or why Black experience, pre-slavery of the, you know, of the United States? Like it really wasn't clear. Luxury and amorous. And so I think that that can be clearer so we'll know. Kind of comparative to those other two that I mentioned. What working here actually in the upcoming course, which I'm sure is a fantastic course. But just for some clarity, and this one just was something that jumped out early.
Sure, I will ask Mr. Moico and follow up with you on that.
I think the scope and sequence to though addresses it a little more specifically. It kind of, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at that part, but it does talk a bit more about exactly kind of the things that get covered.
So it should be clear in that short piece where parents or community are going in. Maybe I just need a better understanding when we're doing our workshop of what people are going to be looking at. Because I tried to click through and it took me to the DESI site and other places instead of. So we want to just make this easier. Does it back and fuse then clear some points?
Was that it? I didn't want to cut you off.
No.
You good? Okay. Did anybody else have anything they wanted to bring up? It was a lot of stuff to look at, certainly. It was a lot.
It's a lot.
Anything else? Okay, these were just for first reads, so.
I'll get the confetti for next time.
Yeah, I think people can still shoot you questions if they come up with answers as well, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, section nine, finance. Mr. Carney.
Yes. Let's see. Steve, anything to say as far as the expense report and the fund balance?
Not really. I would say the most notable thing is just that we're in January, so we're getting towards the tail end of all the big tax payments that we're getting. And pretty soon we should be, should have received enough that we can kind of analyze what we got and what it looks like for this year.
And our projection as we head to the middle of the year, looks like we're headed towards that 50%, mark that we're trying to get down and closer to?
Yeah, definitely. And we have on our list for the remainder of this week to go through and do our second budget adjustments this year. And then we'll be talking about that in finance committee next week to be brought back at the next board meeting. So that number should kind of get honed in a little bit as we get through that process.
Anybody have anything else on just the monthly financials? Alrighty, that was for information. 9.02, early, Afton Early Childhood Center tuition rates. I think we've got a slide deck here and kind of, the last couple of slides of which are pointing us towards what those rates are. Anything you want to add other than it's a continuation?
Yeah, so the slides that are put together, I think most of you will notice are similar to what we've had in previous years. The recommendation is not to have an increase. And I'll say that the main thought process behind that, I think, is that we've just made some pretty large changes to the program. We're only really about five months into seeing what those changes look like. We also posted for, you know, a new director for the building, so that's, you know, some similar amendments there and trying to let some of the dust settle on those decisions before changing what tuition looks like for families.
And I know we talked about it this morning, Steve. I just want to come mention for anybody who might be watching, just the smaller deficit on the actual. I'm looking at slide two, is, it will catch up to what we think the budget will be as we, we've sort of gotten the revenues in with the taxes and then the expenses for the rest of the semester.
Yeah, we collect revenue almost 20 days to a month ahead of time. So we've already collected all of the revenue for January and probably most of, it's not in here, but for all of January. So when you're looking at that, you're really only looking at four full months.
Or I guess, yeah.
Four full months of the tuition.
Tuition, right.
Whereas in our minds, we're probably looking closer to six months.
Any other questions? Administration recommends and I so move the approval of the 2022, 2023 Afton Early Childhood Center tuition rates as presented. Do I have a second? Jordan, thank you. And any other discussion? Alrighty, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion passes seven to zero. A bid award for asbestos abatement and tile installation at Gach.
Yeah, so this was, we received seven bids for this, so I feel like we got some pretty good interest in it. We feel like we got a really good number for it. This is for 10 classrooms, which is all of the remaining classrooms that have asbestos flooring. So it's just a flooring project. And I think I put in the notes in there that we do have a contractor on board to put new flooring in. The bid for that came back relatively low. So it wasn't an amount that required us to do a sealed bid for it. Midwest Service Group is a company that we use all the time for it, so we feel good about them.
Excellent. Any other questions? No? Administration recommends and I so move the approval of Midwest Service Group as the asbestos abatement contractor for the Gach flooring projects for the amount of $37,000. Do I have a second? Second, Jordan, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any extensions? All right, motion passes seven to zero. Next one, 9.04, a bid award for the H, the high school fencing project. Anything to highlight on this one, Steve?
So again, these are two companies that we've used frequently in the past. There was a pretty big difference in their bid on this one, but we feel like Kirkwood fence had everything within their number. They didn't say that there was any sort of lead time issues on the supply support, which is a pretty big deal for this stadium.
Yep.
And this should be a pretty drastic project. It's the entire perimeter fencing around the football and baseball field will be replaced as well as new upfield fencing. And it'll kind of tie into the new dugouts that we're doing as well. So we'll see, this should make a pretty drastic improvement to the less and the safety of the baseball field, which is their priority for us as well as we're trying to address that entire stadium complex up there.
Were the products comparable? That's a big difference in cost.
Yeah, products are comparable. We spec, it's the same product that we've been using, which is like a black vinyl coated fence. So they're, same product, or same product.
So is this difficult to just get a couple of bids like this? Steve, like there would be more applicants that would be willing to bid on this?
You know, I'm not positive for this one. How many companies showed up for the pre-bid on it? I do know it's a pretty big project for a fencing company, so the capacity for some of the companies to be able to handle something. so the capacity for some of the companies to be able to handle something the size, I'm not sure what their workslifts look like or anything like that. But these two, I think felt like it was within the scope of what they could do.
Well, that's fine. I'm not really saying anything against these two, it's just your own two.
Yeah, yeah.
Am I asking them to go along?
Yeah, 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 we can address that one too.
Thanks, Kenny. Yeah. Anything, anything else? Administration recommends and ISO move the approval of Kirkwood Fence to replace all existing fencing in the high school stadium, high school stadium area for the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Patricia, thank you. Let's see here. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes seven to zero. The next one, nine point oh five, bid award for the high school window and door replacement project. Yeah, Steve, you want to say a little bit about this? And I, I know we had talked a little bit this morning about one bid.
Yeah, so yeah, going off of that conversation and definitely anytime that we only get one bid, it's something that we try to look into a little bit and see why. This was a little bit of a unique project. So I think that's maybe the, why the interest wasn't quite there on it. So what it is, is a replacement of like twelve different systems throughout the high school. Exterior doors is a storefront system. There's some exterior windows. We did have a second bidder who had to pull his bid at the last second, like in the parking lot to turn it in, because one of the subcontractors said that his number wasn't good right at the last second and that he wouldn't go with it. So we do know that that bid was for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So at least in recommending this, we, we have a prior relationship with J and J Construction. I'll say that we were budgeting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for it. So it did come in right around where our budget was. And we do know that the second bidder said that his bid would have been right around there as well. So we felt pretty comfortable with all, with all of those things. And that's, those are the reasons that we felt comfortable enough to recommend it. And, you know, of course, we did realize that one bid is not ideal.
Do you guys look at unit price? Sorry. When there is a simple bidder like that, do you ever go back and look at unit pricing and just to see if it's in the ballpark?
You know, I think sometimes, yes. I'm not positive with Jeff and Steve did that, those are not.
Good deal. Any other discussion?
Is this all upon functionality or the special class that we use or the language?
Yeah, I don't have all of that.
Oh, that's included in that price?
So there's probably a combination of some things that are included in that price and some things that we'll have to bring in the third-party window film crew after it's installed.
Which is typical?
Yeah, it's typical. It just depends on what exactly we're talking about. If it's a light in the door or windows or something like that.
Great. Any other questions? Administration recommends and ISO move the approval of J and J Construction as the contractor for the high school door, window and storefront replacement contract for the amount of one hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mike, thank you. Any other discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion passes seven to zero.
You get a raise after that big section. Great job. All right, section nine, personnel items. Mr. Levinson.
So ten point award for staffing changes. And we have it in a two-part. First, we're going to do all seven votes. So let's start with one for all seven. This is for an administrative assistant, one at Gach. And the summer school admin intern at the high school. Any questions, comments or concerns for Dr. Rock on the first part of this? Do I need to specify this in my recommendation that it's for those two positions specifically?
Yeah, I would, I would maybe just specify that it's for the admin assistant, grade six through twelve summer intern and the stipend position. That, that's, that's, those are the three items in the motion.
I agree with that. All right. So, administration recommends and ISO move the approval of the staffing changes of administrative assistant, one at Gach and summer school admin intern in grade six through twelve at the high school. Do I have a second?
And the, was baseball in that one?
Yeah, I didn't go that far. And I'm sorry, we have, and adding JB baseball head coach stipend at the high school. Now do I have a second? Any questions, comments or concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Steve? Okay, motion carries seven to zero.
There's.
Okay. You good?
Yep, yep.
The second one is employee, employment recommendation for the summer school administration to enjoy for grades eight through five at Mayne Year's Building. Do I have any questions or any questions for Dr. Rock? All those, I'm sorry. Administration recommends and ISO move the approval of the staffing change of summer school admin intern eight through five at Mayne Year Elementary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Standing? Motion carries six to zero.
Can I ask real quick, I didn't get it out fast enough. It says K eight. Is it K five or K eight?
K five. Yeah, for this one, yeah.
No, it's all right. I saw it both ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, six twelve. We have the extension twelve.
The sixth one's, yeah, six twelve and the other one's K eight.
Yeah. Again, the.
Oh, I only saw K five.
The administrative content is labeled, labeled differently.
It's okay.
Yeah.
I think you said it that way when you made the motion.
You said it correctly. All right, I was only seeing, just dropped it. Just clarifying.
Thank you for that. All right, and we have Bridget back. So we will move on to section eleven, which is our curriculum workshop, which was a fall curriculum workshop that turned into a winter curriculum workshop.
It should open to be spring.
Did I make a video on this? Is that live?
I, I told him there's still time to cancel it. So if someone would like to cancel it or remove it, there's still, still time.
I like, I like his videos too.
I just like the intro music.
Good evening all. See you a long time no seen. All right, we're gonna take a look at the curriculum workshops now. And we're gonna look at a number of different things and do a little activity together. So we'll talk a little bit about the video. It's been a while. Stop it. You have a lot to talk.
Should we put up, Steve?
I'm teasing you.
Do you think we should put a mic down by him?
We'll look at our AHX course offerings, which I uploaded to a separate document. And then we'll do an activity together. All the.
SWOT analysis that some of you may have done before, but we'll, we'll do that sort of as an activity and we'll talk a little bit about why we would do that. And then wrap it all up with a, a model for continuous improvement. So any questions about tonight or things that you want to make sure that we get out at the start before we get rolling?
Where are you starting? After, are we going, are we talking about the video?
Yeah, we'll start with the video.
Okay.
Makes the most sense. We'll start at the beginning. It's kind of the best place to start, right?
There's a song.
There is. Oh, nobody wants that. I'm a percussionist, so singing is not my, not my thing. Okay, so in the, in the video, a couple of the highlights, we're really trying to put a box around, what is it that you're approving when I bring curriculum to you to approve? Okay? What we're trying to do with that is to get all of us on the same page and make sure that we know exactly what it is that we're looking at. Okay, so for example, hence the whole Spider-Man gif of them like, hey, they're pointing at each other. But we want people to know clearly what you're approving. What it allows you to do is know what things are within sort of the box. It also protects you from all the things that are outside of the box that maybe are, maybe not great decisions that a, that a professional might make or that a teacher might make or the things that might happen that our administrators handle on a regular basis. Not a regular on our part, but you know, things happen. And we use the wrong video or use the wrong resource and that protects you from that. But that's not something necessarily that was in that. So let's talk a little bit about that. What were your reactions to that and what were your ideas related to that?
Reactions were fine for me until I got to the slide where it said that we don't approve Project Lead the Way, Biopsy, Summer Learning and that kind of stuff. But that's not accurate. Because we do approve those things.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes. If they reach a certain dollar amount, they'll come to you for approval when they're a, you know, a specific resource along the way. But a lot of times, teachers are choosing those resources. They happen in and out of the classrooms. A teacher will choose a novel to read that may not make it all the way up to the board because it's not something that, that crosses a certain, certain threshold of dollar amount. But yeah, there are, there, those are just resources that teachers use to teach the curriculum.
Right, but we do, I mean, so there's different, there's not just the financial side of it. There's also stat, there's also risk associated with other things. We've talked about data privacy and some of the other things. So there, there are contracts and other pieces to it. Are you specifically not addressing any of that in this?
The contracts and all those things? No, I'm not, not addressing that. What I'm trying.
That's what I, when I first saw the slide, that's what I heard.
One of the.
Is that, is that, oh, you, the board doesn't have anything to say about these things.
Right. One of the, one of the things we really want to be careful is like, Project Lead the Way is not our curriculum, okay? And the Pearson textbook that we use in biology or AP Chem, it's not, it's not our text, it's not, our textbook is not our curriculum. It's a resource we use to teach our curriculum, which is our, our goals and our outcomes and that we're, that we aspire for the students to master. And that was really the intent, although, albeit probably not well communicated in my, in my video.
Okay, but you're not saying, so that, so those things still come through the board? Would it be through the purchase or through a contract or other relationships?
Hundred percent agree.
Okay.
Yep, hundred percent agree. Yeah, but the, the issue we often see when, when we work with teachers and not just in Afton, anywhere, is my curriculum is this book. And we're trying to get away from that and it takes time.
Right.
Or is this kit? Or is this, this website? That, that is my, no, that's a resource you use. And we're getting there. It just takes a little bit of a mind shift whenever we use that.
And then follow, the last thing for me, and I'll shut up.
No. This is a workshop, you're not supposed to.
Well, no, whatever people, other people need to talk as well.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I don't want to do that. But the, but the follow-up, what Patricia said, the, it feels like, we, we used to, when I first got on the board, we'd give you big binders and literally every activity in the classroom was there. And we saw every little thing and that was ridiculous, okay? It seems like we've swung the pendulum too far the other way. And I'm looking at some things that I've seen administrative content in the last curriculum piece, like that feel like should be more in the description. And I think if we swung back just a little bit and added some more content there, that it would be, we would, we would begin to hit the right equalizer. That's just a.
Yeah, I, I like, I like that feedback. And I hope that you'll, you'll, you'll give me a little bit of leash to show you what that'll look like. Because what I'd like to show you is where we start and then where we're heading. And, and I feel like you'll get that, the, the just right because you will have input as to which pieces are, are coming as we, as we see the maturation of curriculum over, over the years. Because once we're done, like in our old model, when we're done writing biology, you never see it again. Like, it doesn't come back to you. And what I want to happen in our new model is that there's a, there's a cycle that we're looking at biology. And we see its first iteration and then we see it grow and we see it evolve and we see it mature. And more things are coming to you and potentially different things. And that's what I want to see happen, is we want to have a modular and a more flexible approach to curriculum. And that's where, that's where I'm trying to get us to. But I got to get us all to, to beta, if you will, to one, to version one before I can get us even to version two. So that's, that's the celebration that I'm attempting to have next time that we're together. Other video thoughts that were in there? Things that were, a little bit of feedback, if you will?
Are we done with the two formats yet?
This officially ends it, yeah. We're, we're.
This is it, isn't it?
There won't be another.
We're, we're done, yeah, we're done. It's officially time to, to let it go. There you go.
See, you had to get a song.
See, I got it.
I just got an email that there was a new version.
Exactly.
I got, I know, I know.
Look, go! I don't want to hear that.
Right. You can't, can't move past something fast enough, right? Yeah.
Because the model is, makes sense. It's much easier for us to be able to understand. So I think we're going to be so.
I'm, I'm really excited. We have been doing a ton of work on, if you remember a workshop we had a little while ago, we had the, sort of the, the prototype of what it will look like when a family interacts and wants to know more about science, for example. And we went in and looked at that. That website is, is almost ready to launch. I know it's not ready, truly ready to launch until July one. That's kind of my target date. But I'm excited to bring that to you for our spring curriculum workshop so that way you can see it, give some feedback on it, have time to play around with it during our, our spring curriculum workshop. So that's been a big push on the backend that you don't see, that is all this stuff, getting that ready. Because I really want our community to feel like they've got something special and something unique and, and really, really cool. So there'll be pieces of that where we look at bringing together a focus group. So that's part of the work that was on our strategic plan, is to bring, bring together a focus group to give us some feedback on that, on what they want to see and then show them what we did make and see if it, it's close to the mark or if it hits the mark. So it's kind of exciting. All right, anything else from the video? I know it's been a while. If, if no, we'll skip ahead to where it says video end or see you Tuesday night. All right, and then a separate document on this packet, the next kind of thing to talk about is the list of new courses. So you saw those already with course descriptions and curriculum documents. I'm going to continue to bring those to you in that format. So what you saw, it was in the separate, it's not in this packet, it's on the separate document on Board Docs, was a year over year. So if you, if you looked at that document with the new courses, you'll notice if you scroll way down, you'll see old courses, okay? So what I want to continue to do is bring you those updates so you can see all of the new course offerings and how those course offerings evolve over time. So similar to what we were doing with the assessment plan, if you remember the, that document, that there's an introductory page that kind of showed you the things that have changed over time. We're attempting to do that same thing with our AHX course offerings. Just so you know, when things evolve for high school, Just so you know, when things evolved for high school, they, there is a growing record, if you will, of that. So on that document, you can kind of see the, the new courses that we were proposing. You saw in your first read, you also see revisions, while some of the courses that we're going to say thank you.
We're not bringing joy anymore.
Any questions on AHs course offerings that cross your path?
Interesting to you.
So, was the Advanced Woods, was that part of the shop class, or is that just a classroom?
It is a, sort of a dirty shop, if you will, course that, that kids took. Correct.
So, how come we're not, are we not going to have shop classes anymore?
We are, we're expanding the, the amount of course. There'll still be the intro, the Intro to Woods will still be there. But we're also working on our relationship with South Tech. And Maryland's here, so I might as well defer to Maryland before I say the wrong thing. Where is, Maryland, Woods?
We were doing it in the Advanced Woods, and then we started to investigate the trajectory to the safety and the factory, and the direction of the tech. Again, using that teacher that we're also using for Project Lead the Way, making sure that we're good. And I seriously try to stay in the woods more than in modern tech. Probably can start using the MyPath as a COE component that we're starting with.
Okay, so instead of dedicating a course to that, we're allowing the, the MyPath course and the COE course to be that additional investigation for a kid that wants to do more with wood. Did I summarize that okay, Bridget? Good, I know you, there's no way you could hear that, so I was, I was right there with you. Okay. The, the next thing I'll direct you to in your packet is, after the AHs course update, is a slide that looks like this, or a graphic that has a sort of a piece of paper on it about new course creation. So, the reason why I wanted to put that graphic in there and just talk about that quickly is that whenever a new course comes about, it's not just random and we don't go through a, a process. Every single time a new course comes from, whether it's a local needs assessment, or whether it's a, an idea from a classroom teacher, or even an idea from a student. Okay? Whenever a, a course can be proposed, there's a process that we go through in order to make sure that, that we've sort of dotted i's and crossed t's in order to make that happen. So that's what you see there in that, that graphic. Now, you may not be able to read every sort of step of the way, but the short version is, they've talked to their department chair, they've looped me in, they've developed a plan, and they've completed some sort of research. Okay? One of the big pieces that I always want to make sure is like, I don't want to cannibalize our own programs. So part of, who is the target, target audience for this new course? And at what grade level? And what are those kids also taking at that same grade level or, or content? And we don't want to sort of create a conflict. So we're always looking and thinking about that when we're creating those different things. So, anytime there's a new course, we go through this process. Where did this process come from? It didn't exist, so I created it. And I created it about four years ago when I got here, when we started adding courses and nobody told the person who's in charge of curriculum there were new courses. So it was part of the, the process of trying to, okay, well, we gotta clean this up. And we gotta make sure that we've, we, we get this in front of Dr. Brock, and we get this in front of our board if there's a new course that we're, we're proposing. So that, that certainly cleaned that up a lot.
Question?
Yeah.
So, is there a corresponding process for ending a course?
Very similar, because when, at any time we add a course, for example, the Fitness for Life is a great example. It was, okay, well, why are we adding this, and then what are we taking away? Because we can't continue to expand the program to the point where we don't have enough staff to be able to fulfill it. So yes, within every single time we've added a process, we've looked at, so what's going away? Because we, we're not hiring 57 more teachers in order to make this happen. So i- in the sort of negotiations, if you will, through, for example, the addition of Fitness for Life, we removed one of the team sports selective things, and then one of the dance courses that weren't making on a consistent, a consistent basis. So we look at what the enrollments has been over the last couple of years in certain courses, and look for opportunities there.
So looking at the, at the process, reading through where it starts and kind of comes up, and it's like that whole chain of command following that it does. What is, what's an average turnaround on some of these? And what are things that could possibly be better streamlined during this process to maybe make it more smooth? Or is it already pretty smooth? I can just see, you know, you've got, the chair needs to be a part of this process. You've got, you know, what if you go to visit a teacher, and that teacher is not the one that feels like, no, this is good. Maybe you find another teacher that would say, I do like this, let's go, we don't need, like, there's, what kind of retirement are we looking at?
Yeah, this new, you know, the shortest I've seen people go through this process so far is about a month. And it's typically a semester. Because I do engage the whole department, I do engage at, at least a classroom of students that could potentially be the ones that would want to take the proposed class. I think I've probably made the process more complicated, and I'm often, we don't need to do that, we don't need to do that, we know what we're doing because we've involved Dr. Myers, or Dr. Buck, or, you know, wherever, whatever, whatever level the course is at. So, I've probably made it more complicated, and I'm often removing steps when I feel like it's, it, it seems to make more sense. You put plenty of safeguards in place, it's always easier to remove them than it is to add them in. Okay, so continuing on from the new course creation process, you see that a lot of these new courses come from what you just saw today, which is the local needs assessment. So that's why you saw the large new, new set of new courses that came to you. So that is sort of the, the next slide that I wanted you to see, that, you know, where the additions are coming from, why those additions are coming there. And then, okay, well, we can't continue to add, what are some things that we need to let go of? So that's where the omissions come from, is we have a, a set of courses that we're, we're removing to make space for the new ones. Okay? All right. So, and moving on, now we'll do our SWOT analysis activity. Sound like fun?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, we're going to do a SWOT analysis activity. And this activity truly is what we did in, in defining some of the things that we're going to show you in our spring curriculum workshop. So, this is a, a set of actions that have taken place. And although not perfect, it does give you a flavor as to some of the decisions that, that we have to make throughout the, throughout the year in our, in our role as leaders in the district. So, some of the assumptions that we come to this workshop and this little SWOT activity is that we care about curriculum, that we want it to be a living and breathing document or experience. We believe the curriculum should be renewed, reviewed annually, facilitated some sort of vertical alignment. Data, part of the review process improves performance, and that there's always room for, for improvements. And there's, there's no one way to, to do this. So those are some assumptions that we bring into the conversations. And I'm sure that there are assumptions that you bring into the conversation around curriculum. But I wanted to sort of frame that up for you a little bit. So if you haven't done a SWOT analysis, it's a real simple four-square, where you're looking at the strengths of an idea, the weaknesses of an idea, opportunities that exist within that idea, and then threats that could pause, could cause everything to sort of break. All right? How many people have done a SWOT analysis before in their job or role? Okay? All right, good. Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. So, I'm gonna focus, yeah, once? Yeah, just one time. So, one of the things, the scenario that we're going to give you is, when and how might teachers come together? So, when we're thinking about doing curriculum, we would like for teachers to come together to do curriculum, and obviously not do it in isolation. So when and how might they do that? So there's a bunch of options that exist for us. Okay? So, we can do a self-paced course, we can do it on a PD half-day, we can do it over the summer. And you can see that other districts all do it differently. There's no one right way. That's the, the kind of thing, is we need to find our way to, to do that. So that's why we put together a SWOT analysis. So, one of the things we're going to focus on is this grid right here, just to get us started. It's the one that says, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, a little grid right there on the top of the page. And we're just going to have some questions that go along with each of these different things. So strengths, what's going to go well if we do this? What resources can we draw on? What do others see as strengths of this? Weaknesses, what could be improved? Where do we have fewer resources than others? Our staff going to see as a weakness? What might our competitors or community see as a weakness? Okay? Opportunities, are there any things that open up that might happen? Trends could we take advantage of, and could we turn the strengths into opportunities? And then of course, threats, what could, what could harm? What could, what could this model really do bad on this? And what is our competition doing? How do our weaknesses, what are our weaknesses exposed? And does our capacity or capability diminish? Any questions about a SWOT activity, what I'm asking you to think about? So the scenario that I'm going to put to you and ask you to think about, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, or threats, is you're going to work and develop a new curriculum development process. You are in charge of curriculum. All right? And you think you're going to engage your team, and that's who you are, is a team, and you're going to do this little activity here. And I'm going to give you some time to think before we actually interact. But, the scenario I'm going to give you is you're going to bring people together to do pay, to do curriculum writing and improvements. And you're going to do that on a already scheduled professional development day. Okay? And that is going to cost the district zero dollars. It's exciting, right? So I'm going to take you, I'll give you a couple of minutes. I'd like for you to, using writing utensil, type up something, and just take a minute, I'm, I'm going to bring you one, don't worry. Take a minute and think through what would be a strength, a weakness, an opportunity, or a threat relating to using a PD day as your time to bring the teachers together to work on curriculum. I'm a curriculum director, I have a pen, any picture?
There's an opportunity there.
Work better? Yeah, see, see how many you can get through, because we're just going to talk about it. But it gives, some of us need some time to process, like me, before we jump in. All right, one more minute, and then we'll come together and talk about what you thought. Thirty more seconds. All right, time is up, let's chat. So I'm not gonna, not gonna bury the lead. We did determine that this was a bad idea. So, I just wanted to let you know that we found more weaknesses than strengths. So let's talk about the strengths, first of all. Why would this be a good idea, to write curriculum on our PD days?
To put more on first, give knowledge of what just a one-third?
Right, everybody's available, right?
Allows people to give their full attention to it for a blocked amount of time. And also, the vertical alignment that we're interested in would be able to happen if it was the whole district on a PD day.
Right, I wrote captive audience on mine, right? Like, they're, they're there, they're, they're dedicated to it.
You can also pull together resources that are hard to get in an asynchronous working model.
Exactly.
It's already paid for.
It's already paid for, right? Built into the schedule, right? It is cost-effective to do it. All right, what's a weakness about this?
Well, what's not getting done instead? Because I feel like we can hardly fit everything into PD days as it is already.
If a teacher are giving professional development day, we say that they can add and take them.
Yeah, so I wrote creates disjointed PD programming. So, you know, right underneath, everyone does this? This is not a strength. Curriculum is not a strength of every person. It's not, we don't need it to be a strength of every person. A great system and a great organization has varying strengths. And we want to put the right people to write the curriculum, right?
And I wasn't thinking of it that way, I was thinking certain people would be writing curriculum that day.
And again, that's a, everyone writes was like a question, like, and if so, like, what do the other people do? Yeah, you know?
When you pack it into a day, you can end up with a, a lack of contemplation time, lack of innovation, shallowness to the content.
Becomes a checkbox, that we need to get done, and then I can go do the thing. Right? I also wrote, we used to get paid for this.
I was thinking that.
I was thinking that.
Right? That was my first bullet point.
Well, I made it a little more abstract, I said resentment.
It's great.
Same thing.
Okay, opportunities. All right, so again, think back to your, your positivity. Mike brought one up, which is a great opportunity, is like, you, you've got access to people or things on those days because they're not dedicated to other things. So that's a good one, what else?
I was thinking that you've got all the teachers there, so, that are assigned to work in a curriculum, and they would have a cross-discipline, not just the alignment, we raise across disciplines.
Yeah, I wrote, there's vertical and there's horizontal alignment, because we're all there. We're all doing it. Yep. It sounds like that's, I mean, that's a silver bullet right there, right? Until you realize, again, you went back over to your weaknesses and thought, man, you're creating a lot of problems for yourself.
I had modeling and mentoring, that's more of an opportunity to do that when you have the group together.
Very good. Yep, what's a, what are some threats?
I think not exposing our staff to something else that's really important that we would normally use a PD day for.
Right.
And I said resentment because some of the, because I was thinking, some of the other teachers would be pulled out to do work, and then everybody else is doing PD, and there will be some resentment for maybe some of them who are having work in on that wanting to be PD.
Yeah, or what if I, I also wrote, what if I really wanted to be a part of math and science? You know, how, where, how do I plug into both?
Some of your best content creators are shut down in a larger group.
Yeah. Right. So this is exactly what we did, okay? And then we created this same SWOT analysis activity for every possible scenario that we could come up with. And then we even came up with a couple of other scenarios, and then worked with our building administrators, as well as our, our learning team in central office to try and figure out, what could the model be for next year? And how do we minimize all of our weaknesses and threats in order to create something that's, that works for us right now? And then creates an opportunity for us to make improvements in the future. Okay? Other feedback thoughts, SWOT things to consider before we move past this activity? Okay? Okay. So, that's what I wanted you to experience, and again, I wrote up mine, that we worked with our administrators to come up with, and I have all the different SWOTS for all the different scenarios. So what I intend, our spring curriculum workshop, is to show you the result, to show you, okay, well, here's what we came up with, and here's what the prototype's gonna look like, and here's the experience that we're going to work with our teachers to engage in for our curriculum workshop as we move into the future. Because we know, we can't do it on a PD day. Right? We just pretty much saw that that's gonna end up not being the best solution for us. Even though, it's the most cost-effective, sorry Steve, there is other factors that take into account, for sure. All right, good, that was fun. Thanks for doing that with me, I appreciate it. Now, the last little section here is on continuous improvement, and one of the main things that I hope you take away from this last section, is understanding that whatever we end up making with our curriculum process, we want it to be modular. I used that word earlier, because I want something to be able to be added to it, in order, like a Lego, if you will, and allowed something to be built upon. And similar to a Lego, I want you to be able to take the same pieces and reconstruct them in a number of different ways. So, one of the consulting agencies we work with is Studer Education, and they use the nine principles of organizational excellence. Each of these pieces are essential to developing a curriculum, and these are the pieces that we have to reflect on whenever we're designing the next iteration. So for example, you know, a commitment to excellence, well, we need to define the target where we're going. And two, measure the important things. Well, we need to, I know, you know, Mr. McNeil and I have talked about this, we need to have data at the part of whether or not that course is successful at achieving the objective that it's set out to achieve. And we've talked about that, and we need to build that into here, so that way, if a course isn't being successful, that we have a process in which to make revisions and improve that over time. And then we can continue to look at the rest of the things on the cycle, but those are the things I wanted to point out. So with that, you kind of get the concept of continuous improvement in our curriculum, and I developed what's called the maturity matrix, which basically would be a way for us to, over time, make additions and improvements to our curriculum. Now that font is entirely too small to read, okay? But this gives us an idea of the fact that when I come to you, okay, we're getting ready to talk about, what does version 2.0 of our curriculum look like? Here are some ideas and some scenarios of what that might look like on version 2.0. This is where we have the opportunity to get feedback from our community and from our elected officials, which is you. Well, here's where I want that to go. Here's where what would be really nice for us to really focus on, and where I can make recommendations, and that will be the next version of where we take curriculum. So yeah, we start with our document, with our goals and our outcomes and our course descriptions. I'll get better at it, Miss Ann, I promise. All right? And then as we do that, we can then come to you and to our administrators and our district leadership, and say, this is where I think we need to go next, and bring that to you of what version 2.0 is gonna look like. So then again, all your 2.0s look similar, they're on the same font, they're in the same documents, we know what the template looks like, and we can navigate it reasonably. Okay? The idea here is that I want version 1.0 to look consistent, and then I want version 2.0 to be fueled by the time that we're in, because in four years from now, after we get from 1.0 to 2.0, it's gonna look different. Then four years after that, as we start going through the cycle, 3.0 is gonna look different. And we want you to be able to infuse at those various inflection points, what is it gonna look like for the next iteration in each one of those versions? So that's what I'm looking at when I'm thinking about continuous improvement, creating a modular system, and again, giving you opportunities to infuse what you want the next version to look like. Does that make sense? Yes, sir?
Okay, so this looks an awful lot like software version.
No!
And I, so.
Can you imagine where I stole it from?
Yeah, it's not, this is, I mean, it's just common sense, it's not necessarily software. My question comes in, we found that it's really hard to do this with three levels that you kinda need four. Have you had that kind of internal thought process or discussion?
So.
We don't need to get into it all here, but.
Yeah, we looked, we actually are having trouble getting to two levels, from a capacity standpoint of our workforce. We think right now that three might be a little too advantageous, and we might need to cut it down to two levels, just because of the fact that, how many times people are able to come back to touch something for a patch or an update? I could be wrong, but right now, we're having that, those conversations. So, not a width issue, I think we're actually probably too far, and we need to skinny it back. But I could be wrong, we probably just need to live it and see.
Could evolve, it might be a different disciplines, it might have a different one.
Yeah.
Just what's one thing we've found over the years?
Well, I have an affinity for software, because I want curriculum to receive the updates, similar to your phone, and I think we've used that analogy in our workshops before, is I don't wanna throw the phone away, I want to improve it with new features, as opposed to disposing of a curriculum. So, that's the model that I'm seeking to achieve. Yes, sir?
Well, I would imagine that there's a bit of a longer, you need to use it before you can evaluate it, before you see if it's broken or needs fixed, or 2.0, or whatever, within a curriculum setting, versus, you write the code, you pump the code, you get it out there, I mean, you're gonna see if it breaks right away or not, and have those minor tweaks or those patches, and kind of move up and down that. It probably, I would imagine, just from a pure, you've gotta get something out there, there has to be some amount of time, a semester, a year, or whatever, I guess it's a year, right? That's what, I think I saw somewhere.
Yeah, depends on the length of the course, really does help us dictate when we're gonna have that revision cycle. But I might teach something in the fall and not teach it again till the fall.
Absolutely.
Which is, that makes that cycle a little bit harder to come back around.
I can see that.
Can you just remind me which group of courses will be the first group to be looked at again?
Let me look back if I don't misquote, but it is in here, it is math, science, and project lead the way.
Thank you.
Do you have people reflecting on their curriculum throughout the time? Like, they teach it in a ball. Are they reflecting as they go through with the feedback cycle in there, or is, I mean, I know this is all developing. Is it in your vision to have them kind of reflecting through to where they can kind of make those edits when they see, oh, that activity really didn't work?
That, yeah, that happens naturally, and it almost is a part, a reflex of being an educator. It is somewhere baked into, you know, our undergraduate career, where we recognize, oh, that failed miserably, and we change it honestly before the next class walks in the door. So, there is not, writing it down is actually really hard. It's making the shift is so, so much easier.
So, I'm curious, this is gonna be such a neophyte question, but I'm, you know, from a curriculum standpoint, it's you, obviously the teachers, is there ever an opportunity or a need? I don't know, I'm not sure if I have a completely thought-out question, but wondering at what point the students, if there's ever a touch point with students around curriculum that has a qualitative element, that, I mean, obviously, we've got tests and metrics and, you know, the testing that we do that gives us maybe the qualitative, but is there ever a student touch point in a curriculum setting? And I don't know if there, I don't even know if it's supposed to be, I'm just curious if there ever is, or, I don't know.
Yeah, I think right now, where I'm focused is around looking at the, sort of, the community and business partnerships, so that's where we kind of created our curriculum advisory council. But I do believe that that has an opportunity with it, to engage our students, especially, you know, 3rd through 12th grade, you know, as we're engaging them in a lot of other different ideas. But, I also believe our building administrators do a great job of that on a regular basis, to gather that feedback, to look at the programs that we're offering, specific, obviously a lot of it, to clubs and after-school activities, where there's a lot more freedom to make those things happen, than potentially in a course during the day.
Yeah, right, and actually, you made me think, like, and just, unspoken in my mind, was the extra programs, like caps and other things, not, I guess I did, I have more thoughts in my head than I'm articulating, but I didn't mean as much coursework as I did, like, those various, I feel like there's those bigger buckets of things that, I feel like, the kids that are taking advantage of these other things, and not just distinct classes, might have an opportunity to tell you what's working, what's not working, or do we do assessments? I don't know, I'm just, I'm not sure there's a there there, but, from your perspective, it's not typical, I would imagine.
I think our building principals do a lot of that work, and I've heard from a lot of that, I mean, a lot of where, you know, Maryland's recommendations and Dr. Meyer's recommendations come from taking student interests, we leverage the ICAPS and the career exploration activities, like, that informs the courses that you saw today, like, those, we didn't just go and decide to make up Intro to Automotive Technology, like, we know that that's an interest, and we know that there's going to be kids that are involved in it. So, not only is that baked into the developing a new course process, but also, it's baked into our local needs and what we bring to you on a regular basis.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great answer, that makes a lot of sense to me. Thanks.
All right, this concludes our curriculum workshop that you've waited so long to do.
It was worth the wait.
It was, I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, and that brings us to Section 12, which is board comments. So we will, we'll start with you tonight, Ms. McNeil. I never get to go at the beginning.
Oh, all right, well, I'll give you the one thing that I was thinking about going in, it's just always fun for me to see the state of the workforce in St. Louis program, because I have version one of that sitting on my computer in Word document, was actually part of the first iteration, many, many years ago. Either 99 or 2000, somewhere around there.
Shoot!
So it was, but it's come a long way, and I think it's fun to see it. I didn't, I didn't know I was the one that started it, I was on the committee that built it, so, it was kind of, it's gonna go.
It is? Okay, thanks. Jordan, do you want to share that?
Thank you for presentations, um, by the P D Department from Detroit. I really appreciate the workshop. Thank you.
I was thinking I'd go to workshop, and I'd go to work with everyone.
So, the workshop is always so good and so thought-provoking, so thank you for everything that you do. I also wanted to go back to the consent agenda, because I was excited that the district was invited to participate in the Desi Fine Arts Education. That comes out of the university, it's very simple, so, and so I knew that well, and I'm really lucky to be here.
Just, I was just gonna echo what Mike said, that local needs assessment jumped out at me, and it did last, the first time I saw it, which was, I think, the first time I saw it was the last time, and just, yeah, it's a good, it's a good document, it's a, I appreciate seeing that. Thank you.
Does Bridgette wanna share any comments, Claire?
Coffee worked good.
And I will just say, thanks to everyone for being here tonight, and echo those sentiments, and I already said about that report earlier, having a sophomore right now, I can see the real-time interaction with it. So it seems like the kind of assessment a district could do, and then put on a shelf, and then next, you know, two years down the road, look at it again, and instead, there's just real-time changes being made with courses being offered, and students being plugged into meaningful opportunities, and so, I love to see that, and it just shouts Afton to me, so, thanks, everybody, and, on that note, I'll make a motion, uh-oh, did I miss something?
No, is it next meeting?
Oh, next meeting. Make a motion to adjourn to executive session regarding pursuant collective bargaining to Section 610.0219, personnel to Section 610.0213, real estate to Section 610.0212, and legal to Section 610.0211. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mike, and this requires roll call, I'll start with you, Jordan.
Yes.
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 Is Bridgette a yes?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes, so that's seven yeses. Let's take, oh, six minutes, it's 8:24, let's aim for 8:30 in the other room. Thanks, everybody. Bridgette, do you wanna log off, and then I can have Travis log back in? Do you want to attend the executive session?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have to go. Maybe it doesn't end up.
We'll be right here.